Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, August 5, 2014. At 6:30 PM, we're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nettles.
Here.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis is excused. Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Thank you very much. Just ask everybody to say a little prayer for Councilman Lewis. He's got a case of the shingles, and anybody ever had it or known somebody who's had it, it is not fun. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the July 15 council meeting, the July 29 special council meeting, and the July 29 council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number two, presentation on the photo contest and awards. Mr. Landon.
This was a very positive and exciting little event that Cindy and actually our branding team helped put together, and Cindy's going to make the presentation tonight.
Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yeah, sort of.
Good. Good evening. So this is a presentation on our Find Your Florida photography contest. This was our second year in a row for doing the contest, and we thought last year was really successful, but we proved this year that it can get better. So this year, we didn't really give categories. We just said to show us what you think makes Palm Coast a special place to live. As I go through them, I'll tell you some background, and then as I go through them, we're going to actually recognize some of the photographers who have been able to join us. And I did get a few regrets for people who are out of town, but we know several of the photographers are here. So we use the photos for promotional purposes, so brochures, advertisements, flyers on our website. We've already begun to use them on our website, and we're currently redesigning our business cards to put in a few of the new photos for this year onto the business cards. I think the thing that we most like is that it builds community. It gives people an opportunity to showcase their talents and to show off what a beautiful community we live in. And when you see the pictures, you're going to be really happy that you live here. We also do a contest for our employees and their immediate family at the same time, and so those two contests run concurrently. And hopefully, you had a chance to see all the printed photos out there. We're going to be displaying them in our city offices. We gave first, second, and third place awards in both contests, and then we also did honorable mentions. It was really hard for us to do the judging because we had 436 entries from 73 photographers. There's a lot of great photos to choose from. So this is our first-place winner, and our photographer is Ilya Ellerin. And Ilya, are you here? I'm presenting him a number of certificates because you're going to see his name a few times, and if his name sounds familiar, it's because he won last year as well, a first-place award. So I think he's the man to beat in this contest. So obviously, this picture is a soccer team celebrating with mostly the moms, it looks like.
Soccer moms.
The second-place winner, this was taken at Palm Harbor Golf Club, and the photographer is Dwayne Van Horn, and he also is here. So Dwayne, please come up. We had a tie for third place, and Ilya, once the photographer's been up, you don't have to come up again, but Ilya also took this photo of a fisherman. And Tyson Kennison took this photo, and I believe that he is out of town. So I think we have all recognized this place as Central Park and Town Center.
Beautiful.
Beautiful photo.
I like the favors, too.
And then also in the public contest, these are the honorable mentions. So this is another one by Ilya. And this is a photo of family fun in the backyard by Joan Twing. I think she may not be here. All right. Marjorie Casey took several nice nature shots. Marjorie's here. That's pretty amazing to take this picture. I don't think I could do it, for sure. This one also is a very nice picture showing one of our favorite hobbies here in town by Paula Sala, and she is here also. This photograph was taken by Vern Williams, and some of these, they don't really do justice from looking at him on the big screen, but it's really a beautiful photo, and I know that he's out of town as well. Oh, you're here? Oh, I'm so sorry. All right. My bad. I thought he was out of town. This photo was taken by Ilya, honorable mention. This photo shows up pretty dark on there, but if you have a chance to see it on the website, all of these are posted on our website at palmcoastgov.com/fotocontest. Was taken by photographer Richard Atchison. I guess he's not here. And then this is another photo by Marjorie Casey. And this one as well. He's obviously good at the macro of nature. And this is a beautiful photo that was taken with an iPhone. This is an honorable mention also by Ilya Ellerin, which is called, I think he called this Valentine's Day. All right. And so I want to move into the employee photo contest, and our first-place winner this year is Larry Fitzgerald. I'm not sure if he's here. Our second-place winner is Leo Chumacero. Is Leo here? And our third-place winner in the employee contest is Chief Mike Beadle. I know Chief is here.
He's waiting for me to come over.
All right. And then we had a number of honorable mentions for the employee contest as well. Tom Hanson, who is almost always here but is on vacation this week, took this photo at Waterfront Park. Larry Fitzgerald took this beautiful canal photo. David Claggs, from our purchasing division, took this photo of bicycle riding on Graham Swamp. And this is another shot by Leo. Intracoastal Waterway by Tom Hanson. And this shot is in the Town Center area also by Tom. So congratulations to all of the winners, and we look forward to next year's contest and all the entries we're going to get next year.
And it makes you proud to call Palm Coast home. For the benefit of the public, there are three items that had been scheduled for time certain to be heard tonight, having to do with Grand Haven, Master Plan Development Agreement, Built-Out Agreement. Those have all been withdrawn, so those will not be heard this evening. Which brings us to agenda item number three, resolution approving amendment to the fiscal year 2012 annual action plan. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this and the next two items are associated with our Community Development Block Grant Program. Jose will do a presentation for all three of them, just one presentation on all three of them. So Jose, if you'll take it from here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Jose Papa with the Community Development Department. And as Mr. Landon mentioned, I will cover three items, the next three items on the agenda, all having to do with the Community Development Block Grant Program. And just to go through a brief outline of the presentation, I'll provide you with a background on the CDBG program. We'll go through a review of the required planning and the process for getting these documents approved, and the three items that you have before you, which includes an amendment to the federal fiscal year 2012 annual action plan, the federal fiscal year 2014 annual action plan, and an update to the Citizens Participation Plan. In general, the CDBG is an entitlement program. It's a federal program, started in 1974, and it's mainly there to provide funding for housing and community development programs at the local level. When you propose to fund an activity or a project with CDBG funds, it must meet one of the following national objectives. That is, it must benefit a low and moderate income person. It's there to prevent or eliminate slummer blight, or the funds could be used to address an urgent community development need. And again, those urgent community development needs are those that are, as a result of an emergency such as a natural disaster that leads to the failure of a crucial infrastructure in the city. The one thing about the CDBG program is that the local, there is a lot of leeway given to the local government on what programs and activities to fund. It's essentially a local decision as to what projects and what activities are funded with CDBG funds, as long as it meets one of the national objectives of the program. For example, the following are typical activities or projects that are funded with CDBG. Housing-related activities, such as what we do with providing financial assistance to owner-occupied homeowners to do home repairs. Public services, which could be things like providing scholarships to access recreational services that the city provides. It could also mean technical assistance to small businesses is another form of public service. You have economic development projects could be funded with CDBG programs. Infrastructure improvements, such as the project we're doing in Seminole Woods to construct a multi-use path in the neighborhood. And also, the planning and administration of a program that is limited to 20% of any allocation, but that could be funded out of CDBG. Just to go through very quickly, there are particular areas where if you do a project in a particular area of the city, that automatically qualifies for CDBG funding if that area qualifies as an area where you have 51% or more low moderate income households. Now, it is important to note, though, that in the city of Palm Coast, we don't have a particular census block group that has, that meets that requirement of 51% having a low moderate income household. What CDBG or HUD does in that case is it allows the city to take the top quartile or the top 25% of census block groups which are closest to the 51% and allow those to qualify for the area benefit. And these are the areas that you see on the map. As part of the CDBG program, there are certain documents that need to be completed and submitted to HUD. Those include a five-year consolidated plan, which is basically an outlook to a five-year period of how you intend to meet your community development goals, and that same document also outlines what your community development needs might be. The annual action plan, which is one of the action items we have before us tonight, is a one-year cut of that five-year period. It's very specific as to what actions or what activities you intend to plan with the allocation for that upcoming fiscal year. So we annually have to adopt an annual action plan in order to receive our CDBG allocation. And other documents that are part of the CDBG program include the Citizens Participation Plan, and I'll get into more, a little bit more into what that entails a little later, but that's also a document that we need to have in order to access our funds. Going further on how we've determined what programs or activities to fund, basically, we've, consistent with the past, we looked at City Council goals and objectives. We looked at the budget, the CIP. We looked at our Economic Development Plan, Prosperity 2021, Comprehensive Plan, and the Master Plan. And master plans that we've created, such as the Bike Ped Facilities Master Plan, the Recreation Parks Facilities Master Plan, and even the Stormwater Master Plan, and to see what projects or activities are in those documents that we can fund with CDBG funds. Now, the first action item we have before us tonight is an amendment to the fiscal, federal fiscal year 2012 action plan. And I think previously stated that with CDBG, your funds don't roll over. It stays within the funding year that it was allocated, and that is why, in this case, we're doing an amendment to fiscal year 2012, because the money that was in that particular fiscal year didn't roll over into 2013. It stays so that it can be easily identified as an allocation for the year fiscal, fiscal year 2012. And what this amendment is, is basically to transfer about $6,000 from housing rehab and $10,000 from the technical assistance activity, and transferring that to continue funding of the Seminole Woods Parkway multi-use path. And that's the tune of about $16,338. There are no other changes to the allocation from that year. The second item we have is the fiscal year 2014 action plan. So this is how we're proposing to allocate the funds that will be available to the city beginning October 1st. Consistent with our previous funding activities, we again will allocate about $250,000 to continue construction of the Seminole Woods multi-use path, about $133,000 to continue our program to providing financial assistance for owner-occupied units, and that's for home repair. Another $10,000, consistent with allocation last year, will be dedicated to providing public service, and that's the recreational program scholarships. That is, it allows low moderate income students to attend summer camp with, under the city's program. And about another $25,000 will be allocated for planning and administration. And that planning and administration also includes monitoring of these different activities. So the total allocation for the upcoming year will be about $418,000. And finally, the final action item we have is the Citizens Participation Plan. This is just, it's a required document by the CDBG program. And again, basically, this document outlines the city policies and procedures for citizen participation in the CDBG program. It includes things like what type of notice will need to be provided for public hearings if it's a CDBG-related item. What are the required public hearings to get documents approved as part of the CDBG program? It identifies an advisory board, our Citizens Advisory Task Force, as the advisory board to the City Council for CDBG items. It outlines the complaint process that a citizen may go through if it has a complaint, if they have a complaint about how the CDBG program is being run or operated in the city. The main purpose of this update and amendment is just to basically meet the requirements of the CDBG entitlement program. We previously had a Citizens Participation Plan when the city received funds, I believe, back in 2005 through the state CDBG program. But there's one particular requirement for the entitlement program that wasn't in that previous Citizens Participation Plan, and that's just basically to define what a minor and substantial amendment is. Minor amendments are those where you basically transfer funds within a project, let's say, I'll take the example of Seminole Woods. If the money is to roll over from design to construction, that's essentially a minor amendment. It doesn't expand the funding for that particular activity. It just transfers to a different phase. And finally, a substantial amendment, which would require a 30-day public comment period and advertisement in the paper, would be for something like if all of a sudden we want to take $30,000 from the Seminole Woods project, as an example, and dedicate it to another activity, such as maybe a stormwater project. That would be a different activity, different project, and would require notice, public And so based on review and analysis of those proposed funding, proposed activities, staff and the Citizens Advisory Task Force all recommend approval of the action items. And those are three. Again, an amendment to the fiscal year 2012 annual action plan, the fiscal year 2014 annual action plan, and the Citizens Participation Plan. And just go on from here. We're at the public hearing stage. All three items are public hearings, and this will, if we pass tonight, would allow us to meet our HUD submission deadline of August 15th. That concludes staff presentation.
Thank you very much. Council questions? Mr. Ferguson.
Jose, I'm a little surprised that we're amending something that happened two years ago. My question is, will we need to amend federal fiscal year 2013 in the future?
The only, yes. I heard from somebody, spend it. The only reason we would need to amend it would be if, as we stated, you want to fund a different activity with the allocated funds from that year.
Fiscal year 13 already ended, though, right?
Yes, sir. And again, the funds don't roll over from fiscal year to fiscal year. It stays identified as a fiscal year's allocation, and that's why we're amending 2012.
If I may add, I would tell you that there is an excellent chance you will see next year amendment to it, because when you have housing rehab, owner-occupied housing rehab, it seldom comes exactly to that dollar amount. So that you will, just like we were proposing this year, whatever the residual is of the last project you can do, in this case, $6,000, usually then you just put that into a capital project like we're doing this year, which is a Seminole Woods path. And that way, you can close it out, get it down to zero, and move on. But, Mr. Ferguson, your question as far as the process, yes, you're always going to be closing out one, about two years old, finishing up the current one, and then getting approval for the next one. So it will be kind of a common three-year cycle that we'll be in each year moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Jose, what is the low moderate income level for Palm Coast?
Sure. I believe right now, for a family of four, the median income is about 56 grand. So I have a chart in a different presentation, but it's at about 56 grand for a family of four is your median income. So if you take about 80% of that, that would be your moderate income limit. And then, I'm sorry, just not to get too much into it, but it's not strictly 80%. HUD does take into account what's the rental rates at this, if the cost of living is a little more in a particular city, then there's adjustments made as to what that moderate income level is, or low moderate income level is. Thank you.
This question was asked in the workshop, but I reiterate it because it's on some citizens' minds. "The acceptance of federal money for the Community Development Block Grant does not open the door for the federal government to deposit illegal aliens crossing the border in Texas and Palm Coast." True or false?
It does not. It is totally unrelated, and that rumor that somehow this would require us or change that is just exactly that, a rumor. We've, our city attorney and staff both have looked into that, and there's absolutely no basis to that being a fact. Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the meeting to the public. The presentation covered agenda items three, four, and five. Public is welcome to comment on any one of the three, although we will take them as separate items when it comes to voting. Anything in the public wish to be heard on agenda items three, four, or five? Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and go back to council. On agenda item number three, additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number four. Mr. Landon, anything additional?
No, nothing additional.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number five, anything additional?
Nothing additional.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just to point out that the one component of that CDBG program, the housing rehab, is for owner occupied, so you have to be a Palm Coast resident property owner to even qualify for that money. So it's, anyway. Agenda item number six, resolution approving final nuisance abatement assessment. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, excuse me, City Council, this is our annual final hearing on this proposal. What this amounts to is every year, we have property that the property owner is not maintaining to our minimum standards. Our ordinances allow us to then hire a contractor to go in and correct the nuisance violation. We then place a lien on the property and send a bill to the owner asking them to reimburse the city for that cost. If the owner does not pay, then this time each year, we go through the process to actually have it be included on their property taxes. And that is what this process is. This resolution authorizes us to forward these expenses to the county so they can attach these expenses to the individual property taxes so that our costs, the taxpayers' costs, supersede mortgages and other liens on the property to make sure the taxpayers are paid back for doing the improvements on the public, on the private property. And this is the final list, ready to go to the county if you approve tonight after you hold the public comment period. Mayor, that's all we have tonight.
Council questions?
Mr. Landon, what's the total bill for nuisance abatement? What kind of a balance are we looking at right now?
I'm going to need some help with that, Chris. If you could maybe help answer that.
The initial amount was just over $200,000. And then, since the initial roll, individuals received letters and are able to clear some of these things up. We won't have the official final number until later this month.
But our track record historically is that sooner or later, we recover these funds. We haven't written off any bad debt on any of these, have we?
No, actually, last year's roll, we pretty much received it all.
Thank you.
Council questions? Open the meeting to the public. Anything in the public wish to be heard on agenda item number six.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Does this include lienhold?
Does this include lien holders, people, not only people but establishments, banks, and so on, that hold a lien on the property or foreclosures? Do they have to abide by this? Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi. I would like to know—
Please give us your name, please.
Oh, my name is Valmera Costa, and I live in Palm Coast, Seminole Woods. I would like to know if there's an assessment code that is due on 2014. If there was a tax deed for sale in 2011, should that amount be included in the tax deed as a lien?
We'll get an answer to your question.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Back to counsel. Who'd like to answer the first question?
I volunteer our attorney to answer both questions.
There you go.
The nice thing about this process is that it makes sure that the city is going to be paid, as we mentioned in the workshop. These are commensurate with their taxes. They're put on the tax bill. Mr. Mayor, could you give me the specific question again, the first question, so I'm sure I answer it completely?
Do the, if there are multiple liens on a property, mortgages, second mortgages, home improvement loans, if there are a variety of lien holders, are they all covered? This has to do with prioritization.
Well, the lien attaches against the ownership of the property. And not only does it attach against the owner, so it's the owner who will lose the property if this is not paid, just like the owner would lose the property if the owner does not pay your ad valorem real estate taxes. That process is not as simple as you don't pay your taxes, your real estate taxes, and then you lose your property. Tax certificates are sold each year that you don't pay your ad valorem real estate taxes. And after a certain number of years, and after notice to each property owner that has not paid their ad valorem taxes and has not redeemed their tax certificates, after notice, then that will be redeemed as a tax deed. The party that bought the tax certificate will ultimately obtain title through a tax deed. That same process is the process that is for this, and that's why we're getting paid. People, when they receive their tax bill, this is included on their next tax bill. And so when they pay their taxes, they're not just paying their ad valorem taxes, they're also paying for the work and the nuisance abatement that the city of Palm Coast taxpayers paid to make sure that their property, that their nuisance was abated.
If I could just amplify that a little bit, there can be a number of liens on a piece of property, but there is a priority. Number one on the list, your property taxes. The property taxes get paid first. If there's any money left over at the sale of the house, then the first mortgage holder gets whatever's left over. If there's still any money left over, so on and so forth. The problem with typical code enforcement, you may put a lien on the property, but let's say you had a house who had a value of $200,000 with a $100,000 mortgage. During the recession, the value of the house dropped to $100,000. There's no money left. There's no profit in the sale. So if it was straight code enforcement, your lien would not be satisfied. But here, property taxes and these liens are the first priority. So we get our money before the first mortgage holder. It's probably the most secure way of ensuring, as Mr. Landon said, that the taxpayers aren't subsidizing somebody else's property maintenance and repair. The second question has to do with, and I'll see if I get this right, and if I don't restate it, correct me. If there was an assessment due in 2011 and a property sale in 2014, what would be the status of that assessment, of that lien that was due in 2011?
Well, if there was a nuisance abatement lien that was placed on the property along with the ad valorem taxes in 2011, it would be treated identical as the unpaid 2011 taxes. So if the property owner failed to pay the, and satisfy the tax certificate that would have been issued in 2011, and a sufficient time passed after notice to that property owner of a tax sale of the tax certificate, then a tax deed would be issued. So it's possible, since this was, if this, if the facts are that in 2011, on this, on the parcel, if there's a parcel where there was a nuisance abatement lien that was placed, that it's possible that the property would be sold. The city's been paid. The city would be paid. The city was paid when the tax certificate was purchased by the investor. That's when the ad valorem taxes are paid and when our lien is paid.
Yeah, let me see if I can amplify that. Let's suppose you don't pay your taxes. Shame on you. The clerk of the court will, and you see this in the paper about once a year, you see these pages after pages after pages after pages of unpaid taxes. As the law says, on the steps of the courthouse, there will be a tax lien sale. The bidding starts at 18%. Mr. McGuire didn't pay his taxes, so his piece of property, we're going to put it up at 18%. 17, 16, 15, 14. The lowest bidder gets the privilege of paying those taxes and gets a tax lien certificate. Now, Mr. McGuire, sorry, Bill, has three years to pay that person back, principal plus interest. If at the end of that three, and I believe it's still three years, at the end of that three-year period, if he has not redeemed that tax lien certificate, then the holder of that certificate gets the deed to the property. So there could very well be a three-year gap between the time the assessment is placed and the property is sold. But when that tax certificate is sold, that's when the property taxes get paid to the county, and that's when these liens get paid to the city.
That is correct.
So we've already gotten our money.
That's correct.
Beyond that point, it's between the lien holder, the tax certificate holder, and the property owner.
And that's why Chris was able to respond earlier, Mr. Mayor. How much did we collect last year? Because taxes were paid or tax certificates were satisfied or were sold, that's why the city has had its amounts paid.
But, Mr. Reishman, help me out here. By having a nuisance abatement assessment, that puts us higher on the list because in a case of a foreclosure, the courts could come and say, well, gee, you're down on the list, so you're only going to get 10 cents on the dollar. Well, so from a taxpayer's standpoint, this puts the city of Palm Coast in a more favorable position.
The most favorable position. This is the way to go for nuisance abatement, and we're able to do this because the Florida statutes allow us to do this. We adopted this process, like other cities have specifically, as authorized by the Florida statutes. But let me give you an example. If we were not to use this process, but we use the standard code enforcement process, and the code enforcement folks went out and cut the lawn or cleaned up the yard or that sort of thing and spent $150, they would then place a lien, a code enforcement lien, and it would be in the public records. And then six months after that, the mortgage is foreclosed because that same property owner doesn't pay their mortgage. Our code enforcement lien, if it was recorded after the mortgage, and they usually are, would be wiped out in the mortgage foreclosure, and we would then not get paid through that mortgage foreclosure. Contrast that with the process that we're talking about tonight.
So we're trying to protect our citizens. We're taking citizen tax money to take care of this property, and we're trying to make sure that we recoup it and not 10 cents on the dollar.
Exactly, exactly.
Because the, and you're right on track, the alternative for the city would not to be, to not do the nuisance abatement, and you would then be diminishing the value of all the surrounding properties. Now, this is a very important process, not just for the city and the property owner in question, but for all the neighbors.
Exactly.
Because by bringing that property up to minimum standards, you prevent the degradation of everybody else's property.
This has turned out to be an incredibly valuable tool for local governments in the state of Florida through the recession and all of the foreclosures and all the properties that were vacant and abandoned.
Which brings us back to counsel. Additional questions, comments, or motion on agenda item number six?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Ferguson, I'm sorry.
I don't know who to address this to. Maybe we have the answer, maybe not. But we've had a number of complaints about the Matanzas Woods Golf Course being a problem. And I'm wondering if any code enforcement or nuisance abatement entries are on this list for that property for last year? Because people have asked me, what can they do beyond, I mean, complain?
We've had to take, well, contact the property owners numerous times to clean up their property. They have always cleaned it up themselves to meet our minimum standards after we contacted them. So I don't believe the city has actually spent dollars on that property and therefore would not be on this list, to my knowledge. I can confirm, yeah, I'm getting the right nods that that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. McGuire will speak. Your motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries out objection. Agenda item number seven, resolution approving the Old Kings Road special assessment role to be transmitted to Flagler County tax collector. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is another assessment, property tax assessment, but totally different than the one we just talked about. This is actually a voluntary assessment where the property owners along Old Kings Road between State Road 100 and Palm Coast Parkway actually voluntarily agreed to assess themselves additional property taxes to pay for the Old Kings Road improvements. And that agreement and that assessment is in place. This is just the annual public process to put all the property owners on notice exactly what that assessment would be. So at this point, it's pretty standard process. We have not heard any comments from any property owners and believe it is ready for final action after hearing public comment.
Counsel questions? Moving on, we'll open the meeting to the public. Anyone in the public wish to be heard on agenda item number seven? Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Go back to counsel. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries out objection. This brings us to the consent agenda, items eight through 14. Before I ask if council members wish to remove anything from the agenda, this is an opportunity for the public to comment on any of the items, agenda items eight through 14, to see if you'd like City Council to remove one for more detailed discussion. Number nine. We'll remove number nine. Anything else? Seeing no other person, we'll close the public portion meeting. Counsel, is there a motion on eight through 14 excluding nine?
Move approval. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries out objection. Agenda item number nine, resolution approving the agreement between Flagler County, City of Palm Coast, and Kristin McCabe, MD, for EMS Medical Director Services. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, when you have an emergency medical service or EMS, as we refer to it, you must have a medical doctor that oversees that program. And they supervise paramedics, provide their protocols, and help with training, and deal with a lot of the issues that our paramedics deal with out in the field. And so this agreement enters into a contract with the medical emergency room director at our local hospital. It also is a three-way agreement because the county obviously also has EMS services. And it's best to have one emergency room doctor who oversees the entire EMS program. So this includes a contract with the county too and shares in that cost so that there is one doctor providing consistent protocols and care for our EMS services throughout Flagler County and Palm Coast.
And the reason we have a new contract is because the hospital has a new director.
Right. The reason we are doing this, it's very similar, cost is the same, is that recently there was a change at the director at our emergency room at the local hospital, and therefore this basically makes the change primarily, the only thing that's changing here is names and some cleanup.
Mr. Landon, I believe that this name came up in front of the county commission yesterday morning and was approved.
Yes, it was, this has been a joint effort. We've coordinated this, and I think everybody is in agreement with this agreement at this time.
Counsel questions? Open the meetings to the public. Since this was removed from the agenda, anyone wish to speak on agenda item number nine?
When I, if I go to, if I call the ambulance and I have to go to emergency room, are you saying now this doctor's got to look at me and you pay him? Or her? Is that what I'm, I don't know if I'm getting this out of my mouth. Okay. So now, I go to the emergency room and I come home, and then I get a bill for $1,000 for being in the emergency room. So I'm paying through my taxes and I'm paying through my insurance. So isn't that kind of double-dipping for the hospital?
We'll get you an answer. Next speaker. Anyone else wish to be heard on agenda item number nine? Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Let me see if I can help clarify this. The fee that we're paying to Dr. McCabe is not for her medical practice, but for her setting of standards, for her authorizing the use of certain drugs by the EMS personnel in the field. It is essentially a management fee for the county ambulances and for the City of Palm Coast Emergency Medical Service personnel. EMS personnel, paramedics, oftentimes administer drugs. They're not physicians, so they can only administer drugs under the, on the authorization of a physician. So that's part of what we are paying Dr. McCabe for. Also, the doctor is responsible for maintaining the standards of performance. How do you do the drugs? When do you do the drugs? Under what circumstances? So it's essentially a management service, an oversight service, for the EMS personnel. In all probability, you might not see Dr. McCabe when you go to the emergency room. That's a totally separate fee.
And, Mr. Mayor, just for the public and for the council, the other reason that we're entering into this is because if the City of Palm Coast wants to have an emergency medical service under Chapter 401, they have to contract to have a medical director. So it's state law that's requiring this, for the very purposes you just described.
Back to counsel. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move approval of agenda item number nine.
I just wondered, I know if Mr. Carroll was satisfied with the answer.
He's never satisfied. He doesn't want to pay any money.
He's got Obamacare.
On agenda item number nine?
Number nine.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Norman Weiskopf. Regarding this number nine, the Flagler County runs the EMS department. Is that correct? And the City of Palm Coast does not run the EMS department. My question is, how does the City of Palm Coast get involved with paying a fee to this doctor or whoever the fee goes to? Why isn't it just between the county and the hospital or the EMS department? I mean, how does the city get involved in this? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else on agenda item number nine? Having spent 35 years on a volunteer ambulance many years ago, I think I'll take a crack at this one. The county operates an EMS service that is countywide. They operate all of the transportation ambulances countywide. But because of the fact that we are a large and populous city, our needs for EMS cannot be totally met in terms of response time by the county. So the City of Palm Coast, as part of its fire department, trains a number, in fact, the vast majority of our firefighters, as paramedics. So we will provide, and we have two, I believe, chief, two medic trucks, so that if there's a call, a person's suffering chest pain or something of that nature, automobile accident, the county will, the county dispatcher will dispatch the closest unit, in most cases in Palm Coast, that may very well be one of our medic units. We will initiate medical care, EMS care, paramedic care— We will initiate medical care, EMS care, paramedic care, while waiting for the ambulance to arrive from the county. So, we, in fact, do benefit from the facilities. If the city did not maintain EMS services, if we did not have these medic trucks, if we did not respond, then we wouldn't be party to this agreement.
And those ambulances are at our fire stations?
There are ambulances throughout the county, but several of them are stationed in Palm Coast fire stations, yes.
Mayor, if I could just add one thing, all of our fire trucks are equipped with EMS capability, advanced life support, and actually have paramedics on those trucks too. Although we may not transport, when we get there, we have, we provide the same level of service that the ambulance would provide. It's just that we have to rely on the county personnel to do the transport to the hospital. So, with that same level of service, you have the same requirements to make sure a medical doctor oversees the program. The county would not be able to provide a reliable, well, a quick level of service without the city's personnel also, unless they really added as many people as we have to their, so it requires both of us to provide the level of service we have today in Palm Coast.
I don't know if the acronym is still used, but many years ago, when you had emergency medical technicians, they talked about the ABCs of life support, airway breathing and circulation. When you get into the advanced life support, the paramedics, it's ABCD, which adds drugs and defibrillation. All of our fire vehicles, the medic trucks and the fire trucks, carry defibrillators, carry the drugs. But in order to use these advanced medical techniques, you have to have medical supervision, hence this agreement with Dr. McCabe. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
I was curious, what bucket of funds, or what, where do the funds come from to pay for this service?
General fund. It's actually within the fire department budget.
Thank you.
And going back to, I guess it was Jack's question, yes, you'll get a bill if you were transported to the hospital. You'll get a bill for the emergency room services. You will also get a bill from the county for the ambulance transport services.
But if I could add, you will not get a bill from the City of Palm Coast.
Because under, under Florida law, in a statute passed by the Florida Legislature in an attempt to prevent duplication of services, before you can run an ambulance service in the state of Florida, you must have a certificate of need. In other words, there has to be a reason. You can't just go, ah, let's run an ambulance service out of Palm Coast just for the heck of it. The certificate of need is issued by the county. So, Flagler County has not seen a need for a separate Palm Coast ambulance service. Probably more than you needed to know.
Jack, the good news is you won't get a bill from the coroner.
Did we vote on agenda item number nine?
No.
Further discussion, or is there a motion on agenda item number nine?
Move approval of agenda item number nine. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of tonight's meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on the agenda, something that you may be interested in talking about that was not on tonight's agenda. Come up to the podium, give us your name, please do much contribution to three minutes.
Hi, my name's Mike Tenasha. Palm Coast resident over in the P section. I live off, street off of Pine Grove Parkway that recently had a motorcycle accident about the last three weeks where an individual was killed. It was actually during a slow traffic time, but let's all face it, Beltair's traffic has really stepped up a lot in the last few years, and we really can't afford to have any more accidents of that nature over there. There's a school bus stop as soon as you pull off of Beltair onto Pine Grove. There's always kids out there, and usually quite a few of them, and at that time, cars are coming off that intersection, gunning it, just trying to get across there to get down to Pine Grove. My proposal is the city put a traffic light there.
At the intersection of?
Pine Grove and Beltair. I have a friend that a number of years ago had a similar accident. Fortunately, he's still with us, but he's lost range of motion in his arm due to an accident at that intersection, driver neglect. It'd be nice to see something like that go in.
Okay. We'll take that under advisement. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, I'm Norman Weiskopf. A judge ruled that it was illegal to give out red light camera tickets before the year That money should be returned to the public, or to those people that got those tickets. What are you doing about that?
We'll get you an answer.
Thank you. And the other question, while I'm up here.
Go ahead.
Is 12, 13, 14, are they, did you cover them?
Yes. That's part of the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Next speaker.
I'm Steve Carr, and I live on Florida Park Drive, and I've talked to you all before about the excessive traffic and large trucks that keep coming through Florida Park Drive as a cut-through from Palm Coast Parkway to Palm Harbor Parkway. It is really a health hazard to us that live over there, and we really would like something done to reduce the traffic and really to cut out the large trucks. When the large trucks come through there, the vibrations just do everything to your house. So, we're just asking that you do something, to look into it. I don't know the reason why the traffic cannot be reduced on that street. I mean, that's really what I'm asking. Why is the traffic, why can that traffic not be reduced? And also, the other thing is, can we get a traffic noise analyst, to analyze the traffic noise as far as the impact that it's having on that street? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no approach to the podium, we close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Thank you very much. My timer's not working. Mr. Reichman, would you care to answer the question about the reimbursement for red light ticket citations issued prior to the Mark Wendell Act?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The case that the gentleman's referring to is a Florida Supreme Court case, and it dealt with the singular issue of the dispute between the two district courts of appeal over preemption, whether Chapter 316 in the Florida statute preempted local governments from, the actions that they took prior, pre, prior to 2010 in the Mark Wendell Act, and enforcing, you know, state laws on running red lights. That was the only issue, and that Supreme Court case did not provide any guidance to any party, the cities or the other parties to those lawsuits regarding the, what happens next, or refunds. There is a lawsuit pending, which I have to, I'll discuss with you, of course, and the result of that one, of that Florida Supreme Court case, deals with one of the many defenses that the City of Palm Coast has raised in that lawsuit, and is not dispositive on any of the other defenses. And that is the current status of the litigation involving red light cameras.
And if I can just amplify on that a little bit, it's not just as easy as, well, we'll pay back the money, because as I'm sure you're aware, there are attorneys who have tried to create a class action suit. And in a typical class action suit, the attorney of record can get 30, 35% of any Until the courts award the certification of a class, it would be premature for us to refund money to the person who paid a ticket, because then there'd be no money to pay the attorneys. And present company-accepted attorneys do like to get paid for their services, so...
He's not accepted.
It's one of these kind of things, Mr. Weiskopf, that simply has to go through the court system. The courts will eventually set out the parameters for reimbursement, and as I've said, and I think as council has reiterated, we will abide by the final decisions of the court, as we must and as we should. Florida Park Drive, busy street. We've had our traffic engineer look at it. We do traffic counts. We've asked the commander to pay particular attention to Florida Park Drive. But the reality, simple reality is, if you ban traffic on Florida Park Drive, you simply move it to some other street. Florida Park is a local street, and much of the truck traffic that you're describing is local traffic. It may not be local to Florida Park, but there are 18 or so streets that come off of Florida Park. Very, very difficult to say that they don't have a right to use that street. As far as noise, yes, we could certainly have our traffic engineer take a look at that and see if there are excessive noises, but part of the problem, I'll defer to the commander, does the state of Florida have noise ordinances for vehicles, loud mufflers, so on and so forth?
Not that I'm familiar with. I'd have to research, and Mayor, get back to Mr. Carr.
Okay. We, yeah, well, certainly we're aware of the issue, and I wish there were a simple solution.
Your honor, I have a question. If there is such a law or statute relative to noise, how do you enforce it? What do you do?
Therein lies the problem. Therein lies the problem. And I'm not advocating for this at all, but in New Jersey, where there was mandatory motor vehicle inspections, they would have a noise meter, and they would stick it up your exhaust pipe, and if you were excessively loud, they'd give you a ticket for a loud muffler. But without that kind of ordinance, without that kind of inspection, it would be very difficult to cite a particular driver for making excessive noise. Speeding, that's relatively easy to control, relatively easy, if you happen to have an officer there, but we'll ask, we continue to ask our traffic engineer to look at it and see if there's something that can be done, but quite frankly, I'm, thus far, I'm at a loss.
If I may, I've been working with Commander Carmen just last week or two, about two other complaints, similar kind of complaints, but this on Farmsworth, which is another cut-through from Old Kings Road to Palm Harbor Parkway, and then recently complained on Clubhouse Drive because of construction traffic. And the point being is, is that any time you try to reduce traffic on one street, it's going to force that traffic someplace else. And, and, you know, it's just very, very difficult to take action without impacting other people. You just, you don't solve the problem, you shift the problem. And Florida Park Drive is one of those that, well, it was, I mean, we all would tell you it's not designed correctly for the traffic it has, but you're not going to eliminate that traffic, it'd be a matter of shifting it. And I think that's very important to always keep in mind.
And there was a speaker who spoke about traffic, possibility of a traffic signal at Beltair and Pine Grove, something to look at.
We've heard that. I think that's a good one to have our traffic engineer take a look at, and make sure that the, if the signal isn't warranted, because we're, it has to meet certain criteria for us by law to be able to install a signal. But even if the signal's not warranted, are there other improvements, site distance, is there something going on at that intersection that might, we might be able to make some improvements? We'll take a look at it.
I have a comment about that. So, Pine Grove is my collector's street to Beltair from Piedmont, where I live. And so, I'm very familiar with the intersection, as the bus stop is very close, but we don't regulate where the bus stop is. But I just wanted to let you know that it's my understanding that staff is preparing an application for the TPO to do a corridor study, sorry, the Transportation Planning Organization, to do a corridor study for all of Beltair, which would evaluate the entire roadway and not just at an individual intersection, but look at it as, as a, as a, you know, a consistent piece that you could understand how the traffic is working. I think the real issue with Pine, with Pine Grove and a light is going to be the proximity to Whiteview, because it's not very far to Whiteview. So, I don't know how two lights right on top of each other like that would, would work.
See, that's a, Mr. Ronsberg's a good point. You have to look at the roadway in its entirety, because if you do something here, we always talk about the problems of unforeseen consequences. What you do here may affect white, you know, white mail, or it's, but if we can get that corridor study through the TPO, Transportation Planning Organization, that'll help us address it in a consistent fashion. Okay. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. McGuire, anything for yourself?
No, sir.
Mr. DiLorenzo?
No.
Mr. Ferguson?
Not tonight.
Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Yeah, I would love to give you a couple of updates. So, a little, a couple more bragging on city staff. One recognition, national recognition in particular, that we recently received for our strategic action plan, and this came through, actually Lena Williams, who you've all met through our budget process and a lot of work she's doing with Chris Quinn. And that is our performance measure, and our performance measure management. There's thousands of cities in the, in the U.S., and only 49 were recognized for our program that actually puts together that work plan, if you will, those performance measures that are directly tied into city council's goals and the strategic plan that you have given us direction, and then actually going out and measuring and getting it done, and getting recognition. Only our first year to apply is, in my opinion, a huge indication of the kind of quality of work we have going on with, throughout the departments. And then another one that's, you know, the utility, it seems like almost every month, but our wastewater plants received, I think it's a national, was it state, state safety award again this year for having a safe plant? I know that may not sound that big of a deal, but when you're talking about wastewater and the, what they take care of, that is, that's a big deal. That's, that's very, very important, along with our water awards that we always get every year. So, a couple of things that I think is great recognition, addition to a lot of the other recognitions we've gotten this year. That's all I have, Mayor.
You're not going to comment about the magazine recognition of Palm Coast?
Actually...
Great place to retire? You see that one?
Yeah, I haven't read it yet, but I did glance at it. And so, Mayor, maybe if you've read it...
I've not read the article, but I received notification of the press release that Palm Coast has been named one of the 10 best cities to retire in in the United States.
Yep.
I'll look it up. It's on my cellphone. It's in my email. I'll give it to you after, after the meeting.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I move for adjournment.
We are adjourned.